If everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes in the previous meeting have been distributed and hopefully have been reviewed. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes or do I have a motion to accept the minutes as they are?
To accept the minutes.
Have a motion to accept the minutes by Ms. Neal, seconded by Ms. Fairchild. Roll call on that motion, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And the minutes have been accepted. Moving on, we'll go to our reports from our committees. Any of you from this table like to go first? I'm going to try to pan the camera accordingly. Yes, Ms. Neal.
Development Committee has no items on the agenda tonight, but we do have committed legislation that is Assignment 17029, which involve food truck ordinance. And I would like to make a motion to uncommit that legislation.
Motion to uncommit Assignment 17029 and the legislation that has been on the agenda for, seconded by Ms. Paul. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
No.
Florima.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that legislation has been uncommitted.
Thank you. That will appear on the next agenda at the third week and I'll be asking for pass of that sign. My next item is revised draft of Resolution 818. This was a typo on the dollar amount. It amounted to an increase of $13. So I would like to make a motion to reconsider passage.
I have a motion to reconsider Resolution 818, seconded by Ms. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And that amendment has passed.
And now I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 818 as amended.
I have a motion to pass Resolution 818 as it's been amended by Ms. Neal, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And Resolution 818 has now been passed with the amendment to it, as Ms. Neal specified.
One last item to report on is Assignment 18037, which is a land piece to the entire National Guard. Just to update, that legislation is still in the Law Director's office. The National Guard has been asked to do a survey on the property and submit a legal description before the Law Director's office can move on and get the legislation on the agenda. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Anybody else, committee report? Yes, Mr. Florima.
Safety Services is one item on the agenda for first reading, appropriating $7,500 for the Chillicothe municipal ports outside contracts. It's pretty straightforward. At the appropriate time, we'll ask, with the three read rule, to expedite. That really will conclude regular business. On a second note, it's unrelated to safety, but just something that has come to our attention if we've looked at. I'm sure we've all seen and heard and possibly other members of council got complaints on the items that have been left outside and surrounding the donation boxes throughout our city. I would think that this is something that we as citizens have control of and it's embarrassing to see some of the stuff out there that's been left. Especially considering that it's for good cause to donate to others. And we've been, there've been mattresses and bed frames and just things that just aren't necessary to be out there, just junk, basically. There're people using it as a dumping ground. There are other ways, there are other places to donate and I think that if we were, all of us, if there is, if it's overcrowded, hold on to it for just a little while longer and find a proper and appropriate place to put it. And, you know, it's something that people who come and drive through our community sees and we have control over that. So, just a, a follow-up. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Florima. Any other committee reports? Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee has two items on tonight's agenda, item number three, which is a first reading, which is an ordinance transferring funds in the amount of $585 for the purchase of firearms and holsters for the Chillicothe municipal ports. We also have item, and at the appropriate time, I will ask that we please waive the three read rule so they can make those purchases. Also, item four, which is a first reading, which is an ordinance appropriating $4,000 for various funds to pay for the NOL income tax fees for the remainder of the year. And at the appropriate time, because this being time sensitive as well, I will ask you waive the three read rule. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Ms. Patrick.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Utilities Committee has item number two. It's the first reading of a resolution naming the City Engineer Dean Carroll to the District 15 Public Works Integrating Committee. This is something we do over three years. It'll be a three-year term for Mr. Carroll and this is just a subcommittee that works for the county and with the Ohio Public Works Commission, they assess, you know, points to all the different kind of projects. So this will give us a vote on that committee. And at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three read rule.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Neal.
Yeah. The Command Affairs Committee will be asking to meet on the 20th of August to look at a resolution for Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And I want to make sure that we get a chance to do that and mention it more than once. So therefore, I'm going to mention it tonight in terms of what we will be looking at in terms of a resolution, since it has not actually gone through a committee yet. But we would like to meet on the 20th of August, along with several other committee meetings that have been held. And it will only take a few minutes for us to look at this as awareness. One of the things that's pointed out is that there are 164,690 men who will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone every year, so that we know that it is important. And we will look at that and hoping that in the future that we can do as some other communities is actually have an open screening, public open screening during the month of September, that we may be able to have some on in freelance in other cities. Thank you. Also, I would like to, and thank you for right and heard on that, because it is very important.
Oh, that's all right.
I also would like to mention about Tabernacle Baptist Church that has been involved. And this is something that's positive in the community. We get a lot of things negative, you know, even on television, a lot of negative things are happening. And we don't ever really seem to get a lot of positiveness. But I was fortunate enough to spend some time there with their pastor, Reverend Chris Brown. And I got really excited about the program that he has there at his church in connection with the school system. He partnered with Chippin Elementary School last year. And the excitement to me was not that he just had after-school tutoring for the kids, but also that there was emotional support that they give to the teachers. And we know how stressful the job of educating kids are today, that teachers do need that emotional support. And that's another angle that a lot of times that people do not look at. You know, we take care of the kids, but we don't take care of the teachers. So his church is doing that with volunteers and also they bring in the parents for after school to sit and eat with their kids. So, you know, I just wanted to mention that because he is a product of the Chillicothe City School system. And he born in Red Hill. He's back in this community and he knows what we need. And he is working very diligently to do that with his church. They're also asking for more volunteers so that they can offer the tutoring five days a week rather than three. So this is a call out to the community. If you're interested, you can give Tabernacle Baptist Church there, the Pastor Chris Brown, a shout-out. And even if you can't volunteer but a few hours, it will be appreciated. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other committee reports? Not seen any. We'll move on to reports of our officials. Mayor, Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, President Arnold. Quite a bit of housekeeping updates for the community. First, following up on Councilwoman Patrick, Patrice' reference to OPWC, we've often referred to that as issue two. It's also known as issue one, depending on the year. The 2018 issue two project was going to be some work, quite a bit of work done to Woodbridge Avenue. Councilman Hines, I think, was getting some questions on that and I realized that I hadn't relayed the most recent information. So we put out a bid on that project. You'll recall the project was going to be paving, a sidewalk, some storm sewer work, quite a bit of work on that bend there on Woodbridge. We got one bid back and it was especially high. And so much like the ODOT project that we had last year where the bids came in too high and we didn't reward the project, that's what we opted to do this year. Dean, City Engineer Carroll, as well as Utilities Director official are going to take a closer look at that specs for that packet, see if there's any alternatives we can get, and also try to get the bid packets out earlier so that we can try and get some more competitive bids. So the downside is that that pushes that project to 2019 and has no impact on the grant or the funding, but it will have a small impact. You know, it would have been completed as a part of this year's paving. It would have looked to everybody as it was a part of this year's paving project, but so that that project will not happen this year. Funding and everything is still coming up. Speaking of paving, the 2018 paving is essentially underway. We, you'll notice we always start with curb ramps for ADA compliance. If anybody's ever been curious about that, basically any intersection where we're paving, we go in and redo the curb ramps to ADA standards. And so you'll see us come in and do the concrete forms first and then we'll go back and later do sort of those little rumble strips, or whatever called. But paving should be underway next week and we appreciate the community's patience as we get out there and mill and lay down some new blacktop. We are, you know, continuing with the Service Department. Letters have gone out in the mail and we've also hand-delivered some letters to let folks know that there were, there are approximately 500 addresses that are having new trash pickup days. What we had for the past several years was essentially an unbalanced trash route, which meant that Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays had more trash picked up than Tuesdays and Thursdays. That led to scheduling difficulties, some days being much harder than others. And so in an effort to balance that workout and also to fit in nicely with the recycling program, about 500 addresses are getting new pickup days. Usually it's a day before or a day after your current pickup day. We realize that habits are hard to change. We will work with folks as those new days are rolled out. But those notices have gone out. They may not have come in the mail yet, but I'd encourage the council people as they talk to the community to let folks know that that might be coming. Safety Service Director Carmen has a list of those addresses that he can provide to you. It will also be, you know, released in the public dissemination of that information. Speaking of recycling, it's time. Next week, a week from today, 8,000 recycling carts will arrive in Chillicothe and they will be delivered to residences the 20th through, I think, the 24th. Following that, the program, first pickup of the program, will be Monday, September, get it right, Monday, September 3rd. So revisiting, revisiting that schedule, we'll find out, you know, you'll have every other week like we designed. We realize, as Councilwoman Patrick said, it starts on a holiday, but our trash is also picked up on holidays. And so in order to make it a full week-on, week-off schedule, we're starting that Monday. And so more information will be delivered with your cart, on the website, in the mail, but it's coming. We've interviewed quite a few very qualified applicants for internships with our joint program with OUC and we have made a few offers so those interns are starting to help with the program. So it's an exciting, exciting time as this new program rolls out. We, of course, ask for public patience as we start this new program. Of course, we'll have some growing pains along the way, but I think in the long run, it's going to work out best. I want to announce a couple of events that are upcoming. Councilwoman Kearney, maybe a little too modest to mention, but this Saturday, August 18th, is the Seventh Annual Youth Legal Justice Conference. I've had the pleasure of attending the last several years and it has grown in popularity and size. And last year, I believe it was the first year at OUC, kind of graduated from the Dr. Ayter Center off of Bridge Street. And so it's a neat opportunity to interact with youth in the area, representatives from Ohio Department of Youth Services, KNC Educational Associates, variety of leaders in the community, and youth kind of interacting together about some of the concerns that are forefront on their minds and how to work through them. And then on September 1st, we'll have another council meeting before this, but on September 1st, there is a Community Day in Southern Playground. That's going to run from noon to eight o'clock, open to the public. There's DJ, family games, just a neat little community neighborhood event that's open to the public. Finally, last announcement is tomorrow, we are rolling out a new logo for the city. Just want to run everybody through sort of the thought process behind this. We have a variety of logos, seals, and identification that we use as the city body. Fun fact, our city seal is actually codified, so it's in our city ordinances. It describes the eagle and the arrows and the things that go into the seal, the number of stars and that sort of thing. But it is maybe similar to other community seals and maybe does not identify us as a community uniquely. Maybe could be used as more of an official thank you letterhead and that sort of thing. And so as we looked at our city vehicles, our city buildings, we found that we had a variety of different indicators of what, how the city was branded. And as we look at a community that wants to be competitive, moving to the future, working on economic development, having a brand and identity, we wanted to unify some of those things. And so the new seal or the new logo is actually an old logo, but we like it. It's the, essentially a portion of our current city flag. It's a circle, which represents O, which is the state of Ohio. That's a C, which represents Chillicothe. There's a star for the first capital and then a blue ribbon behind it, which represents the Sider River. And so you'll start to see that roll across the city for one branding campaign, sort of recognizing what the city represents. If I was really slick, I would use that PowerPoint right there, you know, had it animated. We got it fixed. So anyway, you'll find that, and we had questions asked today. We can certainly circulate PDFs, JPEGs, that sort of thing, if you have any use or desire to have your own little city logo. But with that, I'm done with my housekeeping reports and all representation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Feeney.
Sure.
Our auditor, Ms. Crystal Spatnagle.
I met with them today to talk about the beginning of the budget process. We plan to get that started a little bit earlier this year so we can get it completed earlier. So I'll keep everybody in the loop of that. But then the second item that I want to discuss is item number four on the agenda to appropriate $4,000 to pay for NOL income tax fees. Now, it is a fee that the state of Ohio is charging for people that file their business taxes through the Ohio Business Gateway. We've received three payments through them according to a total of $90,000. And currently, our fees are $453. We don't really know where we're going to stand by the end of the year, so this might be a little bit overestimated, but it should cover us for the remainder of the year. One last thing, we are doing, pay stuff will be going out through the email starting next pay. So whenever Tamara passed out a form that made everyone updated for their information, that email that you put on that form is where your payments go. We're trying to get everything electronic and, okay, we're, and that needs to work.
Thank you, Ms. Spatnagle. Law Director is not here with us this evening, myself. I first apologize to our home audience for the camera flying all over the room again. We'll try to bring it back to the podium here, but we'll see how that goes. And I really don't have anything to report other than later on in the meeting when it comes to committee assignments and meeting dates. I am going to announce a review session on the 20th and we have some other committees meeting that evening, so I'll give my, those dates and all the committees at that time. Moving on, we have audience participation. There's nobody on the sign-in sheet that I can pretty well see from here. Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about tonight?
Mr. Bonner.
President Arnold.
Mr. Bonner is our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you. I'm Bill Bonner, 393 Golden Road, Parks and Recreation Director. And tonight, I'm here with Tim Ball and a few people from our Dog Park Committee. As some of you have probably heard some talks about the Dog Park, I'm here just to kind of give you a brief history of how it kind of got started and where we're at and our goals. The Dog Park, after I took on this position, here and there, some people would bring up some things about a Dog Park. I thought it was a good idea and kind of hooked into it a little bit. I heard, had a few more requests about Dog Park issues. And then I, well, maybe probably less than a year ago, really kind of started looking into it on my own a little bit here and there and talked to Clint about them. And Clinton is definitely in favor of it. And he said, "I'm in favor of it, but I have family and friends who would really be in favor of it." So together, we kind of started a committee. During that time, we had looked at some spots and the area behind Western View Park seemed to be the most logical at that time. We looked there and kind of had some high hopes for it, but due to a few other issues, many drainage issues, that kind of fell apart. About that same time, the committee was really coming together and really getting some momentum and really doing some good work. So we decided the first, first step for the committee would be to pick a location. And we really looked, I think, did a very diligent job and looked around and gave it a good consideration, checked the Upland Riverside, some places in Yachtangie's Main Park, the Annex, Copperfield, even Pine Street. But we came up with the spot on Yachtangie Boulevard, the spot that as you go past the high school and past the baseball field, you kind of run behind some of those carryouts there, close to the butterfly parks. And we looked around and really Clint was the one that I think kind of focused on the southern part of that. And as I looked at it and everyone else looked at it, I realized this was really an underused part of our city land, because this is a very nice land that really has been used for nothing. And I think that as we develop this Dog Park and get it there, people are going to say, people will have good things to say about this. So that is our location that we're working at. Just so everyone can show you here so everyone can kind of get an idea. You probably have an idea in your head anyway, but we're trying to show what we're talking about. Yeah, this is, this is something that cut off. Right down into here and down into this wooden area. Now, it looks very thick from the overhead, but it's not really that thick down through there. And total will be a little bit over one acre. We'll have two Dog Parks, a small Dog Park, then a Dog Park for the rest of the Dog, I wanted to go to that. But I think it's going to be very nice. The parking will go in through here and we'll, of course, make it ADA compliant, which even if it wasn't a federal mandate, we certainly would make sure this place was acceptable to everybody, with special needs or not. So this is the area. I think you're probably familiar with it. I, for one, didn't really know how nice that was, so we kind of sort of looked at it and kind of got things going. Clint, might he give you a little update about the grants that we applied for and received and kind of where we're going?
Yeah, we applied for, applied for your park. It's from PetSafe and it's a $25,000 grant. We haven't heard back from them yet. We have to hear back from them by early September. Nothing much to report on that at the moment. We will continue to look into more grant and funding opportunities. We also applied for a $500 from Public Introduce School. They actually recommended that we apply for this grant and it has to be used specifically towards safety signage and that would be like rules which you see on the second page of your pamphlet. We will put that up to the public about the restrictions they have at the park. We did receive that and it has already been appropriated to reuse, only to the Dog Park and safety signage. I can go through your pamphlet a little bit. The beginning, first page is obviously a flyer that we'll use for fundraising opportunities, you know, soliciting donors from the city. Second page is the rules that are personally is very qualified to, you know, has a local lawyer on it and also a local veterinarian, they come up with these rules with other committee members we have. Third page, let's see here, obviously that's a map. That was designed, we're working very closely with Petland with this process. We've been holding our meetings there the last few, few months. And they have an artist, you can probably recognize the animation here from some Petland education materials you've seen while walking through the stores. They actually designed that for us, really cartoonish, but you get the point of where the small dog area will be, and the large, large dog, pretty narrow beginning there, but as you see, it opens up in the back. We're really excited about that space, as Bill mentioned before. And the end, in the last page is just a sponsorship form that we're going to be using. This isn't for donations, but just specifically for sponsors. If you'd like to be a sponsor of our park, you can see that, you know, some prices there. We also have donations available at the bottom. I'd also like to mention that we have, I have been working very closely along with Eric Bronlin, who's, of course, for Neil Coleman Insurance. He has come in contact with a few other experts in dog parks and implementing them in communities, and they have, again, I don't have anything official, but the process as far as being able to ensure a dog park, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is dog bites or dog fights and how are we going to handle that? But obviously, dog parks are quite common, and Bill and I feel very confident as a new committee that, you know, we shouldn't have any problems moving forward. Also, I'm working very closely with Dean Carroll and Jim Truitt, who are part of the City Engineering Department. I'm going to be designing the site specifications for them to make sure we're ADA compliant. We, again, a lot of stuff, this stuff sort of went right ahead, but, you know, drainage issues, if we would have put in a parking lot, and, you know, sidewalks, which we, right now, only anticipate having sidewalks on the outside of the Dog Park. If you move in, it would just be a grassed area.
Yeah, of course, the, the parking lot area and some of the sidewalk for the parking lot to the Dog Park, it, it's going to be quite expensive. We're looking, this is going to be really a, a well-run, this committee is really, as alluded to, you know, we have dedicated people, lawyers, we have veterinarians, we have people who work with the Humane Society, so it, it, it's a very good committee, dedicated, with a lot of talent, and it, it's, this, when it comes to fruition, will be a very, very nice addition to the town. As you all know, when you're sitting in those chairs, usually really nice additions come with really nice price tags, but we'll, we'll do the best we can to soften that blow. Does anyone have any questions, Clint and I? Of course, you have Nancy Ames, who's a, a veteran of council, she's been just great for us, and Emily Bolz, also, that's just great colors along the way.
Just a possible timeline?
This is an ambitious committee.
I've heard.
They're, they're thinking spring, but I, I don't know. I'm hoping, I'm hoping summer, so, you know, 2019 is our goal, so.
Well, I appreciate everybody's dedication and their time.
They are very dedicated.
And I've heard, you know, nothing but good things, and this is very nice. And I know that I've had a lot of people that have just heard things out in the community, and people are really interested in having this in their community, so I just want to tell everybody to thank you.
Yeah, very good.
And make those price tags really low. Donations, donations, donations.
Do you think the mission of those donations through the auditor's office and Barkley Park?
The donations will go to the auditor's office, and they go through the Barkley Park.
Barkley Park is on September 1st, but the Humane Society, that's a big fundraiser for them and the Dog Park.
They've included us in that fundraise, so we appreciate that a lot, the Barkley Park September 1st, which the last few years has really been a nice, nice event.
As long as there's an adequate amount of receptibles, we can police it and we'll take our dogs. It sounds exciting.
The reason we chose that area is because it already has water to go, and that's essential to start, having water, you know, fence, and interceptibles will make sure that that's all there at the beginning. As far as putting benches in, shade trees, we hope to get those in there soon after open, by the opening, but.
That'd be awesome. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I just add my two cents real quick. I want to thank you two and Nancy and Emily. That, that committee, I think it's, it's a good example of sort of the private sector sort of running with the idea, taking the lead. It's a sophisticated committee, I think, as you mentioned. My thought process would be, you know, the, the plan is close to complete. We'll get into budget talk soon. Bill can talk about it as part of the capital budget, but like you said, there's this grant money applied for, and then realistically, conversation eventually gets handed to council. But it's nice because it's kind of like a package with, you know, a bow on top that gets handed off to council, all the works, and then sort of late we're done, and then we'll figure out the funding side of it on the back end. But, you know, they're already looking for donations and stuff before asking the city for dollars. So I think, I think just the whole process is good. Fun to watch, and I appreciate all, all the effort that's been done.
Anybody else here in the, would like to speak this evening? Speaker, council? No? All right. Moving on, old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to talk about this evening? Yes, Miss Spiney?
Just one quick thing. Whitey Coates from the Tree Commission gave me a call, and I guess the commission is wanting addresses of property owners that would like to have a tree. Instead of them going out saying, "We need a tree here, here, and here," they're asking council members to see if they can come up with some property owners that would love to have a tree. So if you can get that maybe to Seal or to Bill Bonner, that would be great. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anybody else have any old business they'd like to bring up? Not seeing petitions and correspondence received by the court.
Mr. President, I have nothing to report, so no, anyway.
New business? Anybody have any new business this evening? Not seeing any. Moving on to committee assignments and meeting dates. We've had five assignments come in since our last meeting. A couple of them are on the agenda this evening already. Finance has had a request for legislation to appropriate $886.06 to police, safety, levy, capital, for extra cost of computers to cruisers. Engineering had a request for legislation for two zoning changes on the Stonebridge Court. Safety Service has a request for legislation to appropriate $7,500 for outside contracts. That's on tonight. Utility and Transportation, request for legislation to appoint a chief executive officer to the Ohio Public Works Commission District 15 Integrating Committee, and that's on tonight as well. And Engineering, a request for legislation to appropriate funds to cover code enforcement for the remainder of the year. And that was our committee assignments. As it's kind of been briefly mentioned earlier, our next Monday is the 20th, that is off Monday for council. I am going to call review session that evening to try to get all of the parties together and re, this will be next Monday at 6:30 here in Chambers. This will be to hash over and try to make the final decisions on the parking ticket assignment. So I'm going to work diligently to get all parties involved. Hopefully, we can get everything resolved that evening. With that being said, then following that meeting will be a committee meeting by the Safety Service, and hopefully we'll have everything to approve through that committee and move it on to the Law Director, and this can, can get in motion. Followed by that, we have a request from the Engineering to have a meeting that evening, and you're going to discuss sidewalks?
Yes.
Downtown sidewalks?
Yes, streetscape, maybe.
Streetscape sidewalks, okay. That is also going to be that evening, and following that, as Ms. Kearney had mentioned earlier, we're going to have a brief meeting with Community Affairs. So next Monday will be a pretty full, a full evening. 6:30, interchanges. And I'd like to see everybody here. At this time, we move on to our legislation. So, Mr. Paulson, whenever you're ready. Item number one.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $7,500 for Chillicothe Municipal Court's outside contracts and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florina?
Thank you, President Arlen. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to waive the three-reed rule.
Have a motion to waive the three-reed rule, seconded by Ms. Corcoran. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Croll?
Yes.
Tattman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number two. First reading of a resolution naming the city of Chillicothe's appointment to the District 15 Public Works Integrating Committee. First reading.
Dispatch it.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-reed rule.
Yes. Motion to waive the three-reed rule, seconded by Mr. Croll. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Croll?
Yes.
Tattman?
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance transferring funds in the amount of $585 for the purchase of firearms and holsters for the Chillicothe Municipal Court and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Croll?
At this time, I'd ask that we please waive the three-reed rule.
Have a motion to waive the three-reed rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Croll?
Yes.
Tattman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $4,000 to various funds to pay for NOL, N L, income tax fees for the remainder of the year and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Croll?
At this time, I'd ask that we please waive the three-reed rule.
Have a motion to waive the three-reed rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Croll?
Yes.
Tattman?
Yes.
And roll call on the legislation.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Croll?
Yes.
Tattman?
Yes.
And roll call on the legislation.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Croll?
Yes.